All right, regular scheduled meeting of Warren County Commissioners and House Sessions. First of all, we're resigning. Folks, if you have cell phones, please turn them off and turn them on vibration, please. Also, keep all noise and looping to a minimum. Please remain standing for our prayer and our place for play.
Tonight, we have with us to say our own prayer. The pastor of the First United Methodist Church up on Main Street, the Reverend James Johnson. He is the senior pastor. James, if you would, please.
Thank you. Let us pray. Everlasting and loving God, we give you thanks for our community. We pray for your wisdom and that the decisions made today will reflect your character and your integrity. We pray for the safety of all of our citizens. And in an age when terror and fear surround us, Lord, we thank you that you give us peace, that you surround us with people of character who defend the justice and defend our peace. May we remember that blessed are the peacemakers, for theirs is the kingdom of God. We thank you again for this nation in which we live. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Listen, please, call the road, please.
Here.
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 Wayne Hopeland.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Carolyn Miller.
Here.
Charles Morgan.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
David Ray.
Here.
Kenny Roberts.
Here.
Scott Ridley.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Diane Starkey.
Here.
Lane Wiltshire.
Here.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Here.
Leslie Hens.
Here.
We will now move on to the adoption of the docket. Chair, would anything motion to approve the docket?
Make a motion to approve the docket.
Motion, Commissioner Bond, second. Second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion passes. We will now proceed on to the reading of the minutes. Is any additions or corrections? With no additions or corrections, I have a motion to approve the minutes as prepared in mail and to dispense a reading of the minutes.
Make a motion.
Motion by Kenny Boyd, second by Commissioner Ray. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion passes. We will move on to our departmental reports. And first on the agenda is Ms. Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should all have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I'm willing to try to answer them at this time.
Motion by Commissioner Carl Lee Baldwin, second. Second by Commissioner Bell. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Out of control, Ms. Peter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You all have my report for the quarter. And if you have any questions, I'm going to answer them for you.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Prater to approve, second. Second by Detective Commissioner Boyd. All in...anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Kenny. Next is County Welfare Commissioner Mark. Do you have a copy of my report? If you have any question? Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Boyd, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion passes. Health Department Andrew Fox. Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Good evening. You all have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, you can ask me.
Motion to approve. First with Commissioner Gary Martin, second by Commissioner Boyd. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
I want to ask you one question.
Yes.
Does the Health Department give shots for sheen? Someone asked me that. Elderly person asked me that.
Yes, we do.
You did. Okay. What is the cost to that?
I'm not exactly sure. We do bill insurance as well, so it will depend on income, things such as that.
Okay.
You'll just need to call.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the IDB quarter, the financial report. You're not Reverend. Go ahead, sir.
Reverend has had a shoulder surgery. I hope I can substitute. You have a copy of my report? If I can answer any questions, you're better to.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lee, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tommy Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next is Planning Commissioner...Commissioner...Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a copy of our report. It sits fourth quarter of 2014, is actually second quarter of 2015. If there's any questions, I'll try my best to answer. If not, I'll reach in and answer.
Motion to approve.
A motion.
Motion by Commissioner Prater, second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. We'll move on to Budget and Finance. The committee reports, Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Budget Finance has nothing to report, but I would love to thank everybody that worked hard on this budget. We're going to post tonight.
Thank you. Building some grounds, Carl Lee Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Building the grounds has nothing to report, but we do have a meeting tomorrow afternoon at five o'clock here in the building. Everyone's welcome.
Economic, National, Agricultural Development, Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have your own report. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Might I ask a question of Economic and Agricultural Development?
Yes.
I know two months ago, we voted to make available public funds to sue a Warren County family for their land so we could erect some new aircraft labor on their property after we took it. My question is, we approved those funds two months ago to sue that family. What's the timeframe on suing that family?
What they're having...well, I'm going to ask Robert if you would to speak on that. Robert, please.
Sure. There's a little bit of concern that when T-Dot came through and built the highway, that there may be some overlap in what they have previously condemned versus what we're taking in our survey. We have to make sure that the T-Dot portion does not cover ours as well. If there's any overlap, we have to get a release from T-Dot prior to starting our lawsuit.
And T-Dot has not been getting back to you, is that...
Right. We're trying to get the information from them. It's an ongoing process.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Is my understanding that T-Dot has not got to settle up with them either on the property that they took?
From what I hear, Commissioner, that's right. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise. Motion passes. Financial Management, Ms. Hills.
Education.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, down there. Commissioner Starkey, Education.
Education Committee has nothing to report at this time. We do have a budget coming up in just a little bit. We'll talk about that then.
Thank you. Now, Financial Management, Ms. Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial Management has nothing to report. We do have some bids out, but those have not been opened, so we'll do that in the future.
Thank you. Health and Welfare, Commissioner Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologize for not standing up, but we have nothing to report on right now, but we do have a meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and Personnel has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Safety, Commissioner Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety Committee has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. We will now go into our special committees. And the first one is County Correction Partnership, Commissioner Bond.
Mr. Chairman, up to jail has been with two or ninety-two inmates, which seventy-nine of them was females. So I've got to report this time.
Thank you. Next is Redistricting Committee, Michael Martin. Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will now go into our new business. First on the agenda is Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property assessor has submitted a certified tax rate calculation form for the year fifteen and sixteen, which reflects a tax rate of 1.9661. The Budget Finance Committee has met on June the twenty-third and voted unanimously to approve the rate of $1.9661. I so vote.
Second. Second by Commissioner Billy Earl Jones. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Go out, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Vaughn.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Danny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Hopeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Leslie Hens.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion passes point four zero. Out of two, Commissioner Bell.
The Education Committee met on June the first to review and consider the public schools budget for the year fifteen and sixteen, including the general purpose school fund and the central cafeteria fund. The committee voted unanimously to approve the budget. The Budget Finance Committee met on June the second and voted unanimously to approve this budget. And I so vote.
Have a motion, second by Commissioner Reddick. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Please call the road, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Vaughn.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Danny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Hopeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
I may have a conflict. I may have a conflict because my wife sit on the school board. No way affect my vote. I vote yes. Carolyn Miller. I may have a conflict because there's no way would affect my vote. And I vote yes. Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Leslie Hens.
I may have a conflict, but that would no way affect my vote. I vote yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion passes point four zero. Out of three, Commissioner Bell.
The Budget Finance Committee met on several occasions to consider departmental budget requests for the year fifteen and sixteen. Each departmental budget request has been considered by the appropriate committee prior to submitting to Budget Finance Committee for final review. On June the thirty, the Budget Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve the fifteen, sixteen consolidated county budget. And I so vote.
Have a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Carl Lee Baldwin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Please call the road, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Vaughn.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Danny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Hopeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion passes point four zero. Out of four, Commissioner Bell, working you over.
The Rules and Procedure Committee met on June the fourth to consider nonprofit appropriation requests for the year fifteen, sixteen. All requests were carefully considered, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend the contributions as included in Resolution Number twenty-two dash twenty-fifteen. The Budget Finance Committee met on June the night and voted unanimously, approved the same contributions. And I so vote.
Have a motion, second. Second by Commissioner Jones. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As a representative among families in classes in Main Street, I want to say thanks for everybody for the donation.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Call the road, please, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Vaughn.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Danny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Hopeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Leslie Hens.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion passes point four zero. Out of five, Commissioner Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do this every year. This is a resolution to authorize the county road superintendent to provide $4,000 in gasoline to the upper common area rural transit system, U-Cars, for the fiscal year of 2015 to 2016. And I so vote.
Have a motion, second by Commissioner Randy England. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Please call the road, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Vaughn.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Danny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Hopeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Leslie Hens.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Anyone vote yes.
Motion passes point four zero. Out of six, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item six is a resolution to provide an appropriation to the McMillan Warren County industrial development board for the purpose of promoting industrial development in McMillan, Warren County, Tennessee, for the current fiscal year beginning July first of 2015 and June thirtieth of 2016. The Economic Development Committee had met on May seventh to consider a budget request. The request was in the amount of $250,000. The committee voted unanimously to send it to Budget Finance. And Budget Finance met on June the ninth to consider a budget request. And based on the overall budget expenditures and projected fund balances, the whole committee unanimously to recommend an appropriation amount of $150,000 to the IDB for the fiscal year of 2016. And I so vote.
Thank you. Second, second by Commissioner Glenn Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question if I may. The money that we're appropriating, the $150,000, is that going to be used to promote industry here in Warren County to try to bring more jobs to Warren County?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Please call the road, please.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Vaughn.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Carol E. Holden.
Yes.
Danny Boyd.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Hopeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ridley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Leslie Hens.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Anyone vote yes.
Motion passes point four zero. Out of seven, Commissioner Prater.
Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number twenty-five dash 2015. A resolution of the governing body of Warren County, Tennessee, authorizing the insurance, sale, and payment of interest-bearing capital outlay notes not to exceed $125,000 for the purpose of purchasing vehicles and related equipment for Warren County Sheriff's Department. The Budget Finance Committee met on June the twenty-third to consider the fifteen sixteen budget. The committee voted unanimously to approve issuance of a capital outlay note not to exceed one hundred twenty-five thousand for the purchase of the Sheriff's Department vehicles during fifteen sixteen. And I so move.
Out of motion, second. Second by Commissioner Ken Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Please, Scott Ruff.
Eddie Bell.
Yes.
Morris Vaughn.
Yes.
Charles E. Holden.
Yes.
Charles E. Holden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Ronnie Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
Gary Crader.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ripley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.